Order. Today is Thursday, July 11, 2013. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Graney?
Here.
Counselor Camardo?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Azika?
Here.
Mayor Quill?
Here. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
You remain standing for a moment of silent prayer reflection, and I'd ask you to keep in your thoughts this evening, retired firefighter Jim Pollan, who passed away. Thank you. Please be seated. We will be starting out this evening with the public to be heard, as always, and clerk, if you would read our rules and regulations.
At this time, we will open the public-to-be-heard portion of our meeting. As a reminder, pursuant to City Council Rules of Procedure, prior to addressing council, speakers are asked to state their name, address, and affiliation, if any. All comments should be addressed to the entire council and not to individual staff members. Your remarks must be limited to three minutes and concern only issues involving the city council, city government, or matters of general city concern. And all speakers before councils should observe commonly-accepted rules of courtesy. Personal attacks or abusive language will be ruled out of order.
Thank you. This time, is there anyone deserving to be heard? Please. This lady in the front, please.
Good evening. My name is Sabrina Hessford. I work with the Cabe County Department of Health and衞. I'd like to speak to the City Council about the Owasco River Trail. I'm here to encourage that City Council hopefully will vote to go forward with the Owasco River Trail, because I believe there's a lot of public support for it. First, I'd like to congratulate the City Planning Department for writing and winning the grant money that so far has financed it, and the fact that the city of Auburn competed nationally against many other cities, I really think is something that we should be very proud of in this city. I believe that the granters envisioned a beautiful modern trail project that will result from their investment, and that the city of Auburn and their planning for the Owasco River Trail should be commended for the amount of public outreach that they conducted. That resulted in two different designs, a preferred and an alternative proposal. The preferred route is on land already owned by the city, which is already maintained by the city, so it wouldn't be an extra burden, I believe, because it already has the responsibility. I think it's important as a city applying now for transportation money that's out there, because there's a lot of money out there, because our government has realized that our infrastructure has become outdated, and it's pretty decrepit at this point, and doesn't reflect the lifestyle that we, as Americans, want. Americans are looking for smaller condensed neighborhoods where they can walk, to shopping, work, schools, and things like that. They perceive that as safer, and it's also usually an economic boon to the city where this happens. Also, I'd like to point out that the Owasco River is a jewel that we have in this area. I believe it would really attract a lot of tourists and therefore money. Building the trail would increase the image of the city to new businesses and new residents. I think that a 12-mile non-motorized pathway along the river where children can ride their tricycles, moms can push strollers, and grandma grandkids can walk along unheated and safely at their own pace would be nothing but a huge increase in quality of life for our city. And if we could sit out at restaurants and look out at the water, our new businesses, that would probably sprout up, and people would be very happy to walk and feel safe to bicycle along this route. I think it would be one of the best images that Auburn can have.
Thank you. A gentleman in the back, please.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Paul Koenig. I'm a doctor here at the Auburn Community Hospital. My wife and I own properties, two properties under the outlet of the river, excuse me. And I'm here today in support of the Owasco River Trail, Greenway Trail. Our properties are at 7053 Owasco Road and 102 Osborne Street. My wife and I recently moved here about five years ago, and we were struck with the beauty of the area and of the Owasco River. We had an opportunity in 2001 to live overseas, and when we moved to that community, they were undergoing a coastal walkway, reclaiming some industrial areas along the edge of the city, and carried it for some miles. We watched this development over several years while we were living there, and our opinion is that it was a transformative change for the city. Not only did all of the residents who lived there enjoy being by the water, using a safe pathway for biking, jogging, strolling, whatever, and also the people from away would come to the city and also very much enjoy using these pathways. It's really an important thing for a community to treasure its natural resources and to embellish it, and if there's any way to go forward, I strongly encourage the government here in the city to pursue it.
Thank you, Doctor. Is there anyone else?
My name is Lyndon Trusakel. I live in Auburn, New York. I'm here representing the Owasco River White Club, and also I am on a committee with Sabrina Hessford, who spoke previously, for creating healthy places in Auburn. Auburn is known as a very strong community with, of course, cycling events, such as the Great Race, the Owasco Flyer. We have the New York State Time Trial Championships here, and the Owasco Stadtris. And so I am here to support whatever Auburn can do for the Owasco River Greenway Trail, and think that it would be a huge advantage to the community. I personally experienced these trails in a number of cities throughout the United States, Providence, Aganuteck, Almena, Arizona, and so on, and I think they are a huge benefit to the community in general.
Thank you. Mr. Latimer?
Tim Latimer, South Street, legislator for the great county of Cuba. Jen, it's good to see up there on the podium is sitting in here, Mr. Dunn. I see that Bill Larson, or Bill and Ron are here from Larson and Engineering. And I see you're going to have a little talking regards to the sludge. I know that the council's asked in regards to maybe having a history and a co-gen plan. One of the reasons we endeavored into that thing was we were burning sludge. The cost of gas was about $2 million. It wasn't very cost-effective, and we had to look at maybe $5 million worth of repairs in our land, plus the cost of the operation. And that's why a digester was suggested in regards to treating the sludge and using it as cover material on the landfill. So I hope that we can come up with some answers instead of hauling our sludge to Rochester for about $800,000 and get treated and use it in our own facility. And as you know, the landfill for years was a cash cow, a generator of funds to this city. And I think that if you look at why that's not producing methane, that would be one reason why the co-gen has worked very well, except that you're not supplying it with methane, so hopefully we can generate more methane in the landfill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latimer. Is there anyone else? Connie?
Good evening. I didn't realize we could speak to the trail on the public-to-be-heard. I gave Debbie this letter, and she has a copy for everyone. I'm Connie Riley from the Auburn Downtown Bid, 128 Genese Street. The Auburn Downtown Business Improvement District Bid strategically supports the council's application for additional funding for the trail program, which would complement the presently-secured federal Tiger II planning grant to establish the Owasco River Greenway Trail project. And having attended past meetings, it seems that the concerns about the urban waterfront trail construction plan have been thoughtfully addressed, and that the trail will follow a path that will be welcomed by residents and property owners. And with the trail including areas within the bid, it stands to reason that activity on the trail would bring additional people and interest to Auburn, and additional opportunities to observe and enjoy nature would provide interesting dynamics for both residents and visitors. So I'm asking you to please pursue the funding for our community and help Auburn become an even more welcoming and interesting city to visit. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Is there anyone else? Sir?
Good evening. My name is Jason Hunchman. I'm at 2 Orchard Avenue here in Auburn. I'd like to put my support behind the River Trail as well. Just on a purely personal level, as a running route, as a photographer, as a hobby, we don't have a whole lot of things like that here. I've moved down here about a decade ago from near Watertown. They did almost the exact same thing along the Black River, and it was a boon to that city. It worked well for them. So just on a personal level, I would use it, my family would use it, my children would enjoy it, and I think it's something that should go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? If not, before we close, and Connie, and for everyone, and for our viewing audience, when you get out of public-to-be-heard, as long as you stay within the guidelines of our rules and regulations, you can speak about any matter that you feel is important to the community. We don't limit the subjects to what's on the council agenda that evening or not. So just so everyone knows, you're allowed to speak within reason and following our guidelines. So, all right? Thank you. We'll close our public-to-be-heard. Approval of the meeting minutes from June 20, 2013. We have a sponsor, Counselor Azika, second by Counselor Camardo. Discussion, counsel? Please call the roll.
Counselor Graney?
Yes.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Azika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie?
For first presentation, calling Lieutenant Dick Stavinsky, the Auburn Fire Department. Lieutenant, if you would, please.
Mr. Mayor. Mayor Quill, members of council, let me start by saying thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Dick Stavinsky. I'm the president of our local chapter, Station 222, Fire, Iron, and Motorcycle, Firefighters Motorcycle Club, and also the New York State Representative for the club. In two weeks, July 25 through the 28th, we are proud to be hosting the Region Six Rally, headquartered at the Holiday Inn here in Auburn. Region Six consists of the northeastern states, from Maryland to Maine. Our station has been working hard for the past few years to bring this event here to Auburn, but by no means could we have done it alone. Thanks to Connie Riley, Jesse Klein of the Auburn Downtown Bid, Meg Vanek, Maureen Picketers, Barton Burdock, and Lucy Thomas of the Cuba County Office of Tourism have been a tremendous help. Working with these two offices and local businesses, we have been able to attract over 200 registrants for the three-day weekend. This will translate into over $100,000 into our local economy. When we were awarded the opportunity to host the rally back in 2011, the real work started. With all that this area has to offer, it was difficult to squeeze into three days. Let me give you a brief description of how the weekend's events unfold. It starts with Thursday evening, with arriving members attending a meet-and-greet at Harley's Pub. On Friday, we plan two rides. One ride to Syracuse for lunch, the dinosaur barbecue, and another to Sodis Bay, returning along Ascenic Route back here to Auburn. And that's where one of our club's traditional events will occur. It's called the Kilt and Colors Pub Run. Diving traditions, getting traditional sky kilt, and wearing our vests, and we will patronize five local establishments, starting at Swabies, then to AT Wally's, and the Curly's, Harley's, and finishing at the SK Post, where we will have live local bands for entertainment. The procession will be led by bagpipers and drummers. As you can imagine, this is a sight to see. All those firefighters slash bikers in kilts. Saturday, we have scheduled a ride through the wine country, stopping at Four Wine Eats for sampling and taking in the breathtaking scenery. That night, we will be at the SK Post again for dinner catered by Balloon's Restaurant, and another live local band. It is my hope that once these folks see what a great place or a great area we live in, that they will return to visit us again in the future. Thank you, and to council and mayor, any questions?
Lieutenant, if people want to attend the kilt-wearing, do they have to wear kilts?
It is open. See, how we are a local establishment, it will be open to the public for attendance there, but it should be an interesting event. We attended one, I attended a rally two years ago, and there was in the area of, at that rally, there were 75 of us in kilts, so we walked right down Plymouth, Massachusetts, right down Main Street of Plymouth, Massachusetts. So I'm expecting with 200 registrants, and then some of the local people attending and some of the others, well over 200, possibly 250 people staying in the area, visiting the area, and spending, and hopefully spending a lot of money in the area.
That leaves the age-old question, what's underneath a kilt? And we really don't need to know that, and we won't get into that this evening.
Just your boots.
Questions, counsel?
No. Great job.
Yeah. Thank you, Lieutenant. Thanks for getting here in Auburn for us. Would this all ask Vicki Murphy if she could introduce our next guest, please, Vicki?
Glad to be back. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Ron Pissaber, I hope I didn't say that wrong. He's the president of Larson Engineering. I'd also like to introduce John Hicks, the owner of Organics Green Industries, and also former Ontario County Administrator. Counsel, tonight, they're going to present a project that they've been doing since 2011 that they partnered with the city, and it's an alternative product, and they love the questions, so please listen here. Thank you.
Can you see the letter?
We're distributing copies of these slides, and essentially, I'm going to just give you some history of the sled project. We made a call, Larson Engineering, working with the city and the city of county. A year ago, there was a sustainability study to look at how can we go green, how can we look at doing things in the community, and one of the items of that planning study was waste management. Sludge is a resource. It can also be a liability. And you have to put it in a truck and drive someplace, and then use the landfill space meant for other garbage, other things. Then you are missing an opportunity to convert it into something useful and something more nature-based. So the whole thinking of green and sustainability started with that study. It followed the discussions with the city officials, and the sludge issue came up, and this is something which you have been looking at, different options. So I'm going to share with you a few slides here, copies of them. I'm not going to go through each line item, but just convey the idea that as a company, we've been working with you, with the folks, looking at this issue. But this slide presentation basically concludes with that we have been successfully able to, using the facility that John will discuss later, convert that sludge into a product which is using worm composting. So essentially, you're probably reading more and more about, there was a company in Avon dealing with albinior and making worm products, and a business group bought that company, did this into a private business. So this is now coming up in a bigger way, so what you are going to be doing is something which is already happening. What it will do for you is convert those tons of sludge into a product that will have increased value, as the value for the organic type of fertilizer is increased. There is a lot of movement against using commercial fertilizers, nitrogen phosphorus, and using organic things, and we are all aware of products being made, products being grown in farms using organic fertilizers. So this would be something very positive for the whole community. And the biggest issue here is money and dollars, and you will see that this kind of approach can save you money, getting rid of sludge, converting it into a product that you can actually market. So with that, I'll just, this slide, the top is cut off a little bit, but it's just basically talking about where you are today, and we just got some data. So it starts about $600,000, $60,000 over two years. So 12,000 tons of sludge has been discharged or disposed of at landfills. This cost is a little lower because some of the stuff is going to your landfill, and you're getting a lower tipping fee. If it went to Terry or some other landfill, you'd be paying close to another $20 a ton because they don't give you the sludge. But your landfill, when it's using this material, is using space, and it's very, very expensive to build these landfills that meet New York State regulations. Our firm was involved in an expansion that you did for the landfill as far as getting contracts and getting expansion. So we know how expensive that space is with the $4 million an acre, and it's pretty big expensive for operation. What we're trying to say is if you could take that sludge away from the landfill, other waste material could go in there and pay you $30, $40 a ton, rather than you using your own space for your own sludge. There is a very strong financial implication of not doing it. External cost, we listed here as a space utilization, environmental impact, truck driving, farther distances. In this case, the conversion will take place on a site which is in the industrial park, very close to the treatment plant, so you don't have to haul it far away. And the opportunity cost is the beneficial use of sludge. So this is where we are today, and our message is that going green could mean gold, meaning making money in the city. This slide takes us to 2009, that's four years ago, so that's where it got started. And the different things that you've been involved in, you can read that at leisure. This slide goes to 2011, Auburners up to December 2011, basically showing what has been done, Larson working with Organics. And what happened is, we know that at this site in Sanica Falls, there is a lot of organic waste being converted to a good compost material that you can hear from John. But the issue was, hey, that's okay. You can make this from parsnial, or this food waste, or that, but how about the sludge? How do we know this is going to work with municipal sludge? Essentially, we went through the process of getting a permit from New York State D E C, and having an arrangement that your sludge could be sent to this site, and over the time of four, six months, become a product that you can sell. So we are able to do a pilot project at John's site, ensuring and demonstrating that it can be done, and the product that I presented. Now, this slide just takes us to last year, January 2012 to now, and essentially, we have done the work, we have produced the product, we have sent it to the lab, we've got it tested. The tests show that it's a good product for converting sludge into a compost product The slide ends at the bottom of October 2012. So last fall, we were able to get the testing done, which shows that this product is from E P A D E C, one of the areas of value. And this is this year's operation, that we were able to draw some more samples of different types of mixes and get it done. The lab that is listed, Woodset Lab, is a very recognized lab nationally for this kind of testing, so we want to make sure that tests are done by someone who is known to be impartial and good company to do that. And today is last night of the July 2013 presentation for the council, so we are here to share with you the bottom line. It's a good idea. It's a good project. It's worth proceeding. Our suggestion is to look at the data, form a committee, a stakeholders group, that can sit down and think about the next step, what can be done as a next step. These are the tasks that are, at this stage, necessarily we need to, and we are presenting the council the information to you tonight. Essentially, between now and September, we hope we can, as a group, people designated by you can sit with us, analyze all the information, come up with some recommendation that you can act on. But the next slide shows what could be possible if everybody agreed that this is the right thing to do. So this is the concept proposal for the city for wormi composting in the industrial park. We are starting with September, whenever that date is, but you could say, fine, we want to proceed further. The goal would be to generate some savings over the long term and control the cost of treatment plant disposal operation. This site is very close to your plan that could be designated as a production facility. If you wanted, it could be developed as a design build, using some self-help or contractors. Essentially, these are shallow trenches. That's where the deposits of material will cover the trenches, and after a period of four to six months, they are totally stabilized, and during this time, we maintain them with moisture and recirculation so the worms can do their job. The benefit of this approach is that as a community, you can take advantage of low-cost financing. If you wanted a private sector company to build this, they're going to go to private market and borrow money, and then you pay that as a cost of operations anyway. So this could be a partnership between you getting a system set up with low-cost financing, and this money that you use to build these trenches is paid back from the tipping fee from the standards that you already are paying as part of your waste disposal cost. The contract operation is a concept where people who do this for their in John's business could be hired to do the operations, supervision, and marketing of the product, so that as the marketing succeeds, the cost or the revenue you could get per ton of the material could be shared between the city and the operator. So these are all ideas. They all say, let's take a material that you're going to have forever. Sludge is going to be there. People are going to be using the system. You might as well make that operation into a product generation operation, into a green operation. If there are grants available, we'll certainly apply and get it to reduce your costs, but that's the basic. Now, I'll ask John to come in and maybe just introduce and tell you more about Organics, that people will be doing this for years.
Thank you very much, John. Mayor, I noticed that your citizens are very respectful of your two-minute rule. I will try and be a little respect.
It's three minutes, and you have all the time you want, sir. Two minutes is great, though.
I get the feeling that you can be comfortable in this setting. My name is John Hicks. More than 40 years ago, my elected to the board supervised my first job with the Solid Waste Committee to develop the county landfill and so on. I later on became the county administrator, got chance to administer the landfill. I retired about 10 years ago as the regional director of New York State D E C. When I went to the D E C, I was an administrator. When I came out, I was an environmentalist, and it was 10 years ago that I got involved in the idea of worms, taking care of the problems of solid waste, and also mediation with sewer. of solid waste and also remediation with sewage sludge and so forth. It's pretty interesting what nature does. The last two books that I read have been about worms. And when I was in school, if I was to read a, instead of reading a book, I'd go to the movie and report on the movie. But, and Ron said, this represents a couple of years with the work and analysis and so forth, which is better reviewed by a subcommittee that has time to ask questions and pick the things apart. When we did thirty tons of your sewage sludge, we produced roughly seventy tons of product when it was done. It really processed very, very well, and we kept it separate. We tried it with leaves, we tried it with paper, and we tried it with some noirs, we tried it with wood chips on it. We tried a number of ways to see which was the best. Essentially, it comes out fifty-fifty is the best. That is fifty percent sewage sludge, mix it with yard waste, mix it with food waste, et cetera. So in a way, if you start to produce sewage sludge, you're solving other problems as well. You really are going green. If you've got restaurants and cafeterias, jails, nursing homes, you take their food waste, and you can recycle that right into your sewage waste. I'm going to pass out some brochures. I'll take the youngest guy, the words. And it's all made about our... That was not a directive, it was a question. Very quickly, organics for the industry, we primarily started as a company that wanted to deal with just an organic product, that is, no organic milk, no organic vegetables, safe for school yards, playgrounds and so forth, safe for animals, et cetera. And we have a great product, but because of what goes into making that product, one yard of our material costs a hundred and fifty dollars. It's worth it when you mix it with topsoil, but so much for the sales pitch. When I used your product, your product was a great alternative to the hundred and fifty dollar product, because you're safe, you have the opportunity to avoid some of your costs for trucking and landfilling and so forth of your sewage sludge. I couldn't sell it quick enough, the seventy tons that I had, at forty dollars a yard, because it not only looked better than topsoil, it handled better than topsoil, and was more nutritional than my organic product. But I couldn't sell it as organic because it's not labeled organic product. And I'm just indicating that not only can you solve your problem or your issue, I'm telling you that it's an opportunity to avoid costs and also make money, and go green and really do something for citizens. But it's, you really need a subcommittee to sit down and say, prove it to me, show it to me, show me your numbers. So that's, that's all I really have to say. I'll be available for questions.
If you want to stay right there, unless we're going to have more here.
Well, I would like to say one other thing, my mayor. When I first got in the landfill business more than forty years ago, larson engineering was our engineering permanent choice. It's just ironic that it happened that way.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Just before you sit down, a couple of questions. In Ontario County you're from, correct?
Exactly.
And you're still using this process as, are you still using this process now?
Well, what I use in the process that we're using, I get food waste activity from the organic vegetable farm. I get noirs from, from also another company that I work with that makes oil preparation of digestive dungu. And we get the leaves through the city of Geneva. We mix those, put it in a trench for six months, we pure and rotate water and so forth, feed the worms activity and so forth. But that's the product, it comes from Ontario County. The only sewage sludge we've done, the permit that we got from the D E C to test, Newark's sludge, Auburn, Auburn, I'm sorry, did I say Newark?
Newark, yeah.
I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, I was just looking for what other municipalities are participating in programs like this. Do you know of any as we speak of?
Let me say this.
I'll jump up the podium.
When we began this project, we did extensive research nationally and internationally. Wormi composting has been used, we just always voted for plants, let them all trailer for years. It was also tested in Dade County, Florida, and there was a wormi composting plant in Pennsylvania as well. It was operating very successfully, they were taking wastewater treatment plant sludge, and they had the wormi composting plant right into wastewater treatment plant. There was a grand pro in Pennsylvania. The reason that that program stopped, which you're going to ask me there, is only because they didn't have a good marketing plan in place prior to the initiation. And the plant manager did not allow, might not allow them to manage the plant. He didn't want to revolve any market material. So there was, there was some vague work, some organizational work that was not done properly, which was one of the reasons why we're recommending this task force.
I might say, it's a little off the subject as far as the sewage sludge. But one of the things in the D E C, we knew from the beginning, was take gas stations with contamination. If you're willing to wait long enough, the worms will clean it up.
John?
Yeah.
You said it took thirty tons, was six months?
We took, yes, we took thirty tons of sewage sludge, and we mixed it forty, sixty, fifty, fifty, and sixty, forty, to see what the best ratio was. We took roughly six months where we monitored the temperature and the moisture and so forth. And as I said, we did different things with it to see what process worked the best. I think the leaves worked the best, bill of things, the paper worked the best, who cares if it worked, it worked very well.
So for thirty tons, it takes roughly six months for the worms to do their thing. Okay, Vicki, how much sludge do we produce, let's say, a year?
Twelve thousand tons.
Actually, we're down from that, we're down from that, what we expected to come back from.
So it's what now?
I'd say around thirty tons a week, so we run it just about every single day.
And so, when I went and seen your process, I mean, there's a reasonable amount of real estate for that. We got thirty tons a week, we could fill that up in, you know, the land that we have available in no time. And then what do we do with it?
Well, I don't know how many acres you've got, but number one, we redesigned our country's, we have a new design, it's been designed so that it's more efficient, takes up less space, and you're able to produce more product. So, at my facility that you saw, we produce two thousand tons per year on seven acres.
So what would, for, your, your, top of the head estimate for thirty tons a week, so that's like, times fifty, two weeks, a significant amount of tonnage. What would be the, I'm going to say the land space required for that with your best process?
Well, as far as I can see, you're in about forty-eight. There's one clarification on that. The reason we're doing this research with some citizen conditions and sampling at different times is that with some controlled environment, you could get the job done.
It was a design of experiments, yes.
But we were able to see that under those conditions, what we have learned, the cycle would be three cycles a year, not two cycles. And these trenches are reused all the time. So one would start in a, not a full scale, it would start at the twenty-five percent of your annual volume, next year go to fifty. But you don't have to build the entire trench at one time, you could just do it in phases, and slowly phase out over time. And we have the calculations in charge that we can share with you.
Okay, I'd be interested in seeing what the, the production rate versus space, acreage.
Yeah, let me also state that when we did this, we couldn't pick the work too much. We picked January, well, we didn't pick it, that's the way it happened, but we did it in January and February. The great thing was, we know what to do even in the worst of times.
Counsel?
One of the things that we mentioned is that we learned some processing improvements through the stick, decreased that retention time as well. One of the things that we did do, gentled the weather, is we mixed outside, we did the initial mix of leaves and sludge, very wet, cold outdoor weather. One of the things that we actually discussed with Vicki and the council members when we came out, was doing it in an enclosed area.
Counsel, with your permission, Mr. Selby's not here, I'd like to, I'd like to get together with Mr. Selby in the next few weeks, probably our next work session. It sounds very interesting, to be quite honest, but forty acres is a, is a lot of room to take care of everything that we produce. But it does sound very interesting, no disrespect to Jenny who was sitting in this evening, but I'd like to get together with Mr. Selby and possibly moving forward a task force if counsel so desires at that time. So, counsel, any thoughts or...
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, see what their, their current process is. I mean, they, obviously, with the design of experiments, they, they found a more optimum process. I'm sure that even further so, there may be some other rooms for tweaks, I would guess. As, you know, probably as, as time does go on, you do tend to learn a little bit more about it. But I'd be very interested to see what the throughput is and versus the space.
Please.
There is one factor that is in your favor. Your site is close to the place where your power generation, and there is a waste heat that's not being utilized. Organisms work better just like us when it's warm. So these trenches could be supplied with warm or liquid recirculation rather than outdated coal. So all of these things are right there at this site, and this forty acres with the right design and the setup could be thirty or twenty acres. We need to work on that so that more cycles can be done. I'm not suggesting we jump on it, let's take one step at a time.
Right.
But go in that direction and see what goes.
Let me explain the forty acres. I simply took the fact that we're doing seven acres, we're doing two thousand tons. I multiplied it by six, twelve thousand, and that's how I come up with forty acres. And if Ron says with efficiency, you can do it every four months, you can, you can cut that figure.
Well, currently, we do take some of the sludge and put it on the landfill, and too bad Mark, Mark stores isn't here. But we use that to generate, to help, I should say, generate some methane, along with the, the food waste from the M S G. So basically, this would be competing with the same stuff we really want to put in our landfill, as far as the garbage for methane production. So whether we would have to decide what we would substitute, obviously, the newsprint or, you know, leaves, yard waste, it could be shredded, things like that, so. If it's effective with that, it would be...
If I could explain, the trend in the nation with EPA and the state of California is not to allow organics to go into landfill, because it takes a long, long time to make that gas. They could go to a digester and make it in twenty, thirty days rather than five, ten years. So you should have the landfill, it's very expensive for things which have no other value, and there are other ways to manage waste. So thinking is changing, and you should consider where the future is.
That, that was one of the questions I was going to ask, is the licensing process with the EPA and the D E C, what, what would be some of the hurdles that we would have to face, that we would face?
In this case, you simply want to have a treatment plant, and it will be presented as expanding your treatment plant process to across the street on a piece of land, so it will be part of your speediest permit, that way you can avoid having a whole new permitting system. That's the way you would try to, if they allow.
But the good news is, we've had a successful project in D E C, and it's improved our process and so forth.
Now, the, the D E C, and you know more about this than any of us here, the D, the D E C has different criterias, it seems like, for a variety of areas, for different regions. So would, I know it's worked in other regions, would, would the D E C okay in our region?
I don't see any reason they wouldn't. They're the one who issued the permit under this framework. I recall years ago, when we first started the Ontario County landfill, we didn't want to use a real valuable farm we had. And so we were saying, hey, we got some substandard soil, we'd rather use with material. When I'd ask the question, what is the best kind of material, what is the best kind of soil to use, the answer was, what have you got? So, in fact, you could, and by the way, all this is lined so that nothing is seeping into the ground, and that's part of the permitting process and so forth. And the leachate is collected in crocks and so forth, and we use that leachate to recycle and keep picking up nutrients and so forth. And quite honestly, the leachate, we use on a lot of athletic fields and so forth. We get three gallons a gallon for that.
I also want to mention something with regards to using the sludge at the landfill. Last year, New York State just adopted their new twenty-year solid waste management plan, which they do every twenty years. In that management plan, they specifically encourage beneficial use of sludge. Utilizing sludge anywhere in a landfill is not a preferred management method. And Ontario County landfill, as you probably know, which is where your sludge is going, is applying for a permit to expand their landfill. And one of the issues that they're facing, that D E C was questioning a lot, is what are you going to do with your sludge, because the residents don't want the smell of it there.
Well, I live two miles away from the landfill, okay? But what I was going to say, let me switch a little bit. Those of you that have visited Seneca Castle, I gave you a test, no odor, and we kept the place looking like a garden, didn't we? I mean, grass is all low, and you didn't see any junk around, it really looks nice. What I will get to you, though, is a, I'm going to brought it, is a sample of the product you're going to get when you're all done.
Is there private companies looking to get into this venture like this, where we could just supply the sludge?
Yeah, we haven't reinvented, we haven't invented it. Wormiculture's been out there for thousands of years and so forth. And yet, more and more, because of the reasons cited, the landfill's restricting yard waste into landfills, and eventually sewage sludge, darn right, you know, there's an opportunity out there, people are going to try to get there. We've been working on it for ten years.
We've got the sludge, so...
You have the control, you have the raw material and land to convert it. I'll tell you the truth, I wished I had two thousand, six thousand tons of your product that we made out of Seneca Castle, I could sell it right away.
Let me mention something to you, from the business perspective, too. Ron made reference to Wormpower, okay, which is over in Iowa, and it's located right next to a dairy farm, and the dairy farmers send their product over there. Dennis Mullin, who was the former head of the New York State Empire Valley Corporation, I'm sure you've heard of him, has a private investment company that's investing in bio powers. He laid out a substantial amount of money to purchase Wormpower, because he's seen... Now Dennis, by the way, was president of Birdseye Foods, so he's a, he's a known commodity investor.
By the way, Wormpower is right across the street from Region Eight, New York State D E C.
I'll sit.
Counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're going to leave us the information, you said you had some information to leave with us? Okay.
Mayor, it was a pleasure talking to your group, they may be feel welcome.
Thank you, sir. Nice to have you here this evening.
Would you want to take these back?
Okay, thank you for the picture. Next up will be Christina Selvick in the Wasco River Greenway Trail.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors, we've been here for a long time.
Business.
Our project consultants are here tonight, so what we'd like to do is walk you through what we've been doing for the last two years, and if you're in the house with the trail, route and alternatives that the public has reflected as part of our outreach process. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Mary Perrell with the chair.
Christina, I think you need to move today out of the mic. I don't think that one's working.
Yeah, it's not working.
I don't think so.
And I...
I think you're loud.
If you could show the board...
Yes, would you please?
And then all four were...
Is the cameraman picking them up?
No, I think it's dead.
Good, how are you?
We're all set. Okay, great, thank you. I'm handing out to you copies of the route alignment that will be showing up there, as well as a fact sheet that we put together that talks about some of the economic benefits of the trail that is being brought, once it's constructed, to the city, as well as on the back, there are a couple of case studies that, you know, further reinforces value of trails, greenways within cities such as Auburn. So here's your copy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you've got to take one from the top. So first, as always, what we do is we establish project goals. And the goals are established first through the RFPs process that is, that we go through in order to be selected for the project, as well as, and as we go forward, with the assistance of steering committee, and then, once again, they're refined as we meet with the community members throughout the process. So with that in mind, let me just go through them quickly, and so you can understand how this all came about and what is, what are some of the factors that were building this trail around. First of all, the project was conceived many years ago, back in nineteen seventy-one, in a project report that was prepared by the county at that time. So it, going forward, it was reintroduced in the city's comprehensive plan, which, at that time, established nine strategies, and they were centered around the idea of reconnecting the people within the city and visitors to the city, to the river. Using the river as an economic asset, as many communities do today, improving and maintaining the integrity of the river as an environmental resource, which it truly is a beautiful resource as you go through the city and areas that probably many of you don't have a reason to go down to, but this trail was really highlighted, and I had the pleasure of, as part of our site visits, actually going and seeing. Moving forward, recommendations from other reports that were done within the past ten years, as well as addressing a dozen of city-owned properties that are currently brownfield and therefore underutilized. This trail, bringing that to those sites, will cause attention and become economic viable opportunities. And then, of course, we heard early on in the process that the town of Wasco chose not to be part of this process, and so we respected that and removed any thoughts or proposals in the town of Wasco, as well as, we also heard clearly that private-owned properties, we heard from the city that that was not something that we wanted to delve into and looking at putting the trail along those properties. So that was clear, and we respected that through the project as we went forward. Some of the more detailed goals that related to the design of the trail was, first, as we have listed here, create a trail for bicycle, pedestrian, other non-motorized transportation. That meant we did not want to encourage ATVs, anything that would disturb the community. If this trail was near residents, would not disturb them. So this was, this is a truly recreational route, but also used for transportation back and forth, for walking or bicycles. The trail was, we were told, that we created a path that extended from Wadsworth Park through downtown and ended at Emerson Park. We looked to locate as close to the Wasco River as possible, and this is also a key point, locate within street riding way limits. In other words, we were cleared not to take private property where on the left. Other goals, and I go through these goals just because they really do help to frame how we went ahead with the project. Maintain on-street parking where feasible. Create trail loops. We've heard from the community that that was important, so that people could walk and , for exercise, and go a certain distance and be able to cut back and turn their neighborhood into their own neighborhood as opposed to repeating a route. Highlight natural features. Construct a trail that is passed effectively. We did not look for creating opportunities that were expensive and was realistic to the city of Auburn as it is. And then, once again, promote economic development opportunities where possible. Some of the pictures that you see on these slides are right within the roadway as we have walked it. So just so that you know, these are pictures that, things that you would see if you went down there yourself. Our process that we went through was, is outlined here, we analyzed the environmental and physical conditions, so we knew on the ground what we were doing was. We did that by walking in the winter and the spring and summer, trail, the potential trail. We walked into the city so we could get a feel for what it felt like to be where there was traffic. We identified scenic views because, of course, that's what's going to draw people back, and we looked at existing street conditions, once again, not just in the field but on paper, looking at what the actual widths were. And then we identified preliminary route alternatives. We had a number of those that we came up with that we showed to the community, and with their assistance, we narrowed down. Part of the process was, as I keep trying to reiterate, is the whole of the community in this project, which is how we like to do these projects. They have to be involved or this project will never fly because it won't meet the needs and desires of the community. So as I said earlier, there was the Wasco River Plan that was done in nineteen seventy-one, and there were other various plans that are listed at the top that fed into the comprehensive plan. Each of those projects and the comprehensive plan itself had a number of public meetings where this concept was embedded. It then led into the project that we are working on today, where there were a number of opportunities for the community to participate. We had stakeholder interviews, we went out and talked to people, we talked to people where the trail would go near, like, for instance, the Finger Lakes Railway. We had a steering committee that represented different organizations that were important to the process. We had two community workshops where people were able to come and actually look at the preliminary plans and where their house was common. And then we had two public open houses, one in the beginning, where we heard clearly that, for instance, the people on Pulsifer, there had been some talk that they were going to, the trail would go along the waterfront, we heard clearly that they did not want that there, so we took that off the table immediately. And then later, when we had the project pretty well vetted out, we went back to them again in June, asked June about this time of year. So a lot has gone into creating this project. The trail, as an overview, consists of a primary trail, secondary trails, and connectors, which we will also refer to as options. We created options that if, for some reason, a property does become available and it is closer to the river, for instance, it meets some of the other goals more clearly, that option should be looked at. And then we, as I said, we had trail loops. The users were bicycles, pedestrians, non-motorized users on, it's located on-street and on, as a separate path. And also, more importantly, we have both types of nodes, and those are areas where people can go park their bike and get out and walk, visit the water, or park their bike and start at the, I'm sorry, park their car and start anywhere on the trail that they'd like. And they consist of both a major node or a minor node, and we'll see those on the trail that Tim will talk about more. And here's some graphics that show the difference. This is a major node, and the minor node is this one, it's just a little bit smaller, consists of approximately the same type of amenities, just at a smaller scale, less bike racks, less trash receptibles, or may or may not be a picnic table, that sort of thing. There are, the trail cross-sections are, we have them, and you'll, when you look at the handout that you have, you'll notice that there are trails marked A, B, C, or D. An A trail is a shared-use lane where the bicyclist would be able to, if it's on a low-volume street, and the bicyclist would be able to ride right with the low-volume traffic that there might be. A wide curb lane is a little bit wider street that automatically allows, and there would be signage that would say that if a bike, bicyclist could be on the road at the same time as the car. And a C trail is an exclusive bike lane where there would be a, you know, clearly demarcation on the road showing where bicyclists would be, and cars should not be at that same time. And then, of course, we have the off-road multi-use trail, which goes along the river and does not confront traffic unless we're at an intersection. And this time, I'm going to turn it over to Tim, Paul doing his work with me throughout the whole project, and he's going to describe the trail as it extends from Wadsworth to Emerson, and then I'll be back to talk a little bit more about the cause.
Thank you, Mary. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. What I'm going to do is walk you through the preferred route of the trail and some of the alternative routes that we also identified throughout this process that we thought would, you know, as Mary said, if property becomes available or you have willing landowners that would grant easements to allow the trail to be as close to the river as possible. Starting at Wadsworth Park, we start with an off-road trail that basically goes along the riverfront and comes out at Aurelius Avenue. From, the preferred route goes down Aurelius Avenue to Clark Street, and then along Clark Street, past the North Division Street Dam, and continues on down Clark Street till you see where Node Six is on your right-hand side of the paper. At that point, we're going to cross the river on a new bridge, pedestrian-type bridge, ten-foot-wide bridge, to get to the north side of the river. Also, within this section, is one alternative that we looked at extensively and that we brought to the steering committee. It showed us some of the pictures of the area, and that's denoted by, you see the three in the prime in the center of the paper, and that kind of goes behind some of the existing buildings, crosses over the river again on a new structure, and then runs along the north side of the river up to North Division Street. There are some struggles in that area just because of the land, the ownership, some of the property owners not being willing to grant easements to the city after we talked to them, but we thought it was important to put this opportunity on paper because if you go down in that area, it's like you're looking down into the grain canyon. I mean, it is so beautiful, you would never know that you're in the city of Auburn, and it presents a great visual opportunity for the river, for people to be down by the river in those areas. So, starting at Node Six, we continue along the north side of the river on a exclusive pedestrian bicycle trail, ten-foot wide, and through the Dunn-McCarkey property up to Washington Street. From there, we cross, again, back over the river on Washington Street, and we continue along the Finger Lakes Rail Line that lies between the arterial and the railroad. Again, we're an off-road trail there, ten-foot wide, continuing all the way up to Node Seven. From there, this is where we start creating some of our loops within the downtown area. Preferred trail, the preferred bicycle and pedestrian trail continues down State Street to Dill Street, up along Loop Road, down Osborne Street to Canal Street. And within this section, we also have a couple walking pedestrian-only quarters. First is, starts on the north side of the State Street Bridge, north of the police, goes along West Garden Street, skirts the medical center, runs along Yard Street, and then down North Street, and then joins back up with the main trail. The other pedestrian-only route starts at the corner of Loop and Osborne and Genesee Street, goes up Genesee Street, and then down, first stretch up to Wasco Street, Miller Street, and then down to Mill Street Dam. From the Mill Street Dam area, you can see we're on both sides of the river. There's already, on the south side of Canal Street, there's already an off-road trail system in there that we would utilize. On the north side, we would utilize Miller Street to get down to the dam and also create an off-road trail that, more formalizes what's back there now, back into the old Auburn Mullen site, that is, is pretty, you know, well-defined back there. We would just really kind of dress it up and, you know, maybe put up some historical markers and things like that. From there, again, we have two alternatives. One goes along the south side, along Osborne Street, to a new node, which is denoted eleven on this map. And from there, we get down onto the sewer easement. That was the preferred route that we talked extensively with the community and with our steering committee, and the preferred route would go along the sewer easement line that would continue all the way down to Pulsifer Street and where the state dam is. We do have another small loop on the north side that goes down Lazette Street, up onto Wasco Street, and then crosses over on the Lake Avenue Bridge, and joins back up with the main trail system. We also have a couple little offshoots here. One continues along Lake Avenue. It's a secondary trail, and then we have the connectors of Swift Street and further Once we get down to the, you can see, once we get down to the Mill Street, or the State Dam area at Node Twelve, we climb back up to the on-road system onto Pulsifer Street and continue as a, as an on-road trail all the way down to the high school. We also have the secondary trails along Swift Street and also along Lake Avenue that would connect up with the main trail at a couple key locations. Once we get down to the high school property on Pulsifer, the main trail continues along the high school property, very adjacent to the river, and ties into the trail that currently exists on the county property, sort of what you see in the center of the map there. We do have some connections out to Lake Avenue and along Lake Avenue, along the high school properties, and also through the county park and along the riverfront. Then we eventually cross over into Emerson Park at a couple locations. One is under the Whitebridge Road, where there's an existing underpass that connects up, and also at an aggregate pedestrian crossing just north of the traffic circle. And that leads us down into Emerson Park.
The next step is to look at a specific area for design as the first phase of development. And we looked at a whole area and together selected two areas to start with. One was downtown, extending from State Street to Mill Street, and the other was Wadsworth Park area. Downtown consists of the area from, as you can see, Curly's Lot, which is Node Seven, and that entire trail system and all of the loops to Node Nine and Ten. That is something that we will start working on within a month or so, and have that ready for bidding out once funding for construction becomes available. This section, we have as part of our cost estimate some additional amenities to Market Street Park, but the goal is... Street Park, but the goal is to get as much of the trail done as possible so that the design or construction is part of this first phase. Going forward, what we see as needing to be accomplished to make this a reality is to seek out further funding opportunities. There are various opportunities that are out there today that the city has certainly have access to, just like any other community does, and if you don't, they will. So, I suggest you, and we'd like to see communities go after these funding opportunities because, in particular, the city of Auburn is very good at getting additional funds and writing applications. So, New York State Consolidated Funding Application, that process is now. There's also a program that's available now through the New York State Department of Transportation. And the Community Development Block Grant Eligible Areas cover both of the areas that we have, actually, I'm sorry, the all of downtown and in particular, Node Eight to Node Ten, which is where we're looking to design as the next step. As the sheet that I handed to you talks about, which, once again, I'd be able to look at maybe after this, greenway systems, trail systems are very popular in cities of this size and this style. They are known to be economic generators, and we and the firm that I work for work on a lot of them, and we see them very popular, and I as a bicyclist myself, really enjoy this, having these opportunities. I guess we could open it down for questions. Would you like me to turn the lights on?
I'll hear you. We've had one property owner that has a residence that they own on Lisette Street, and they expressed some concerns. I went down there and looked at, and you walk where you got it, that you can go right by and looking in the windows. What's the solution there?
It's already a public right-of-way, and as it is, anybody walking through there would have that opportunity, and that allows, if we could go back, that loop, being able to go on that street does allow for that loop.
How does that address the property owner's concern about privacy?
I guess it's a public right-of-way now.
Currently, that traffic there is almost zero.
Right, it is, and I know that, which is why it also works on the other end as a great place for a safe walk through there. I don't anticipate you to get that many more people that would cause that to be a major issue, but it's certainly something that the council can make a decision about and not putting the trail on that location. It does hurt the nature and caliber of the trail as it's designed, it just accentuates it, so it's certainly something.
So, you're taking, talking about the link, basically that loop could disappear and not hurt the integrity of the trail?
No, no. It just does not provide for that, that loop going on Owasco Road, Owasco Avenue, down through Miller, which is very solid use because there's few residents there. But yes, you could certainly make that choice to eliminate that part of the loop of one resident if that's what you want.
The Pulsover Drive here, this is obviously the off-road trail?
No, that would be an on-road trail for bicyclists.
I'm sorry, I meant on-road trail.
Yes.
So, what would that look like? That would have a stripe down the road on the?
No, actually, because of the nature and the low volume of traffic on Pulsover, you would just sign it as a, as a trail for bicyclists. It would, we would advise at some point sidewalks to accentuate that. I know that that's not a popular thing right now, so you could sign it as a bicycle trail only, and that just allow people to use the sidewalks on adjacent streets. So, just as a continued bicycle route, it would just need just a sign.
Yeah. I think that's what people are concerned about, putting sidewalks on Pulsover. I mean, those people have had that property for forty, fifty years, and to really encroach on it is, you know, it's something that I would not go for, I mean, at all.
I mean, I'd like this project very much, but I, we have to be sensitive, obviously, to, to the private homeowners. And I think it's important that we say publicly, I mean, there's no ad in favor of sidewalks on these properties. The, just, now let's get to the, the trail itself. What would the surface be like on these trails?
The surface would be paved, except for the area in Miller Street area that goes back into the mullen site, that would be stone dust because of the nature of that. So, I would suggest you pave if you did not want to do that because this is very much in the preliminary stage. You could do stone dust, and that works very well too. It's just a little harder for bicyclists to be on. So, once again, that's a decision that you can make if you're a voter.
What other problems do you run into if you went with the stone dust?
Uh, runoff, you know, ditching, you have to resurface it, and you have to go back in.
More maintenance.
There's more maintenance. But it's, it's not, you know, just a little bigger than they know, so you just don't dust it well.
You get it packed down pretty good after a while. But it does, you do create channeling and stuff like that, significant irregularities.
It makes it more, less bicycle-friendly, so it makes it less as a, you know, a path, you know, a route for transportation if somebody wanted to, like, you know, Lisette Transit System downtown, and they wanted to use the trail, try to make it a little more difficult, make it more paved. But once again, if you were looking as a cost-saving measure to cut costs, that would be certainly not a way to do it, is to use stone dust, and then as you see, you know, continuing, you know, pride for that if you were to take it at that point.
Typically, how wide are these trails?
Ten feet or about ten feet.
Ten-foot wide?
Yes. And we've accounted for that as, as part of the design and selecting the areas for this route, we have accounted for that.
So, this would only be usable in the summer because I can't see plowing it in the winter?
I, you, no, I would not plow it, but once again, I would say, unless you had a call for it, it would be, you know, probably through, through winter first, you know, I mean, you could even, you could use it in the winter certainly because those areas that are enclosed by vegetation, they wouldn't get as much. The other thing to make note is that a large part of this trail system is on road, and it would, and it would be signed, and it would be, you know, the area would be made safer, I guess that's what it means when you sign it, it's made safer for possibly. So, there's a good share of it that is automatically on road.
There is no way trail is used extensively in the winter, right? There are people that walk in, and you would cross, you know, you wouldn't think in this climate that the trails would be used in the winter, but they do get used a lot.
If we were to, I want to use the term abandon, the Pulsover Drive, would that move it up to Lake Avenue to connect with the high school, or what are the plans there?
You could do both. You, you, we have options to look at that. That's the beauty of looking at the system as a whole as opposed to individual pieces. People could still and probably, and do bicycle on Pulsover. So, as you look at bicyclists, you could sign a continuous path on Pulsover. You could also do that on Lake Ave for pedestrians, for those walking, you know, I think that all of those streets would work, and you might, what would the issue we look at to have?
Troop Ave?
We look, yes.
Troop Ave?
Yes, and you go, so you have four sidewalks, you know, to just sign that for pedestrians.
At the same time, if we were to designate Lake Ave or Troop as the area, that would not preclude anyone from going to Pulsover if they so desired, just, just a signage, basically.
It's really how we do it today.
Right, it's just signed.
If we're around there, we saw people walking. If we identify a route as a pedestrian route, we have to provide some type of off-street accommodation for them. We can't allow them to walk in the street. We looked at, you know, painting a sidewalk in the road. There were ideas that were thrown out by the committee, well, can't we do something that would allow them to walk in the road? And we found there's nothing you can do. You have to provide some type of off-road, off-road system for them, which is sidewalks. So, you know, to go to your point, if, you know, the city ultimately decides that they don't want to put the sidewalks down Pulsover, then we would have to go into one of those other parallel road lanes.
Do us all a favor, please don't mention sidewalk. Please, please. Councilor Kamara, you got a question?
Yes, I just had a few comments. Number one, I think we've got to be sensitive to the people in these neighborhoods, there's going to be excess traffic and people moving along, so I, that's one point. The second thing I'd like you to touch upon, Christina, is everybody's going to talk about cost, of course. What kind of cost is this project going to be looking at, how it's going to be funded? Is there going to be any additional cost to taxpayers of the city if we were to move into partial, doing partial this trail as you, as you talked about? And just the last thing, Mayor, if we could talk about, is maybe having a public hearing on this before we move forward because I know some people came tonight, and I'd like to have, you know, published in a paper that we're going to have a public hearing about it so people can come. There was a few people spoke about it tonight, but I think it's important that everybody has an opportunity to speak on this project, so if you could just talk about the cost a little bit for us so people would know what's involved in that.
The area, actually, you have a little number. I do, I do. Do you want to talk about the details of that? The area that we have, the circle is around there, is, would cost about a million dollars due to construction. The design of that would be about twenty percent of that, which is what the city has in hand now, is that twenty percent for that work. The rest of the trail, as it is designed today, would be about nine million dollars, and that includes, you know, and that includes things like the bridge over the Owasco River. And it really includes the nodes that are designed along the way that allows for those stopping points. So, the total cost is about nine, the first phase would be about one million.
Now, what kind of money, what kind of funding? You said there's grant applica, uh, grant projects out there that would fund some of this and?
That's correct, Councilor. This summer, for some reason, it's the summer to fund trail projects. Went to the Consolidated Funding Application Workshop yesterday, met with a number of state agencies, Department of States, Parks, Recreation, Department of Transportation, Federal Highway. All of these people are funding trail projects this summer. So, we're actually in a really good shape to try to acquire construction money, really since we already have design money to get us to the bidding process. So, we already have the twenty thousand places to do the design. We're looking at eight hundred for construction. They're spending from the Consolidated Funding Application, my survey, through their sustainability program, it's their cleaner career program, it's money that they have available, and it's called category three. They're doing a seventy-five, twenty-five percent match right now. This is a federal aid-eligible matching program, so the CDVG money that we get every year would be eligible to act as match, so there would be no out-of-pocket expense from the general money, if you would like that right. Department of Transportation, their transportation enhancement program, that's an eighty-twenty that's similar to our current federal aid programs, that would also allow us to use CDVG funds this match for that program. So, both of those would allow us to use those federal funds that we already received. The issue with using the CDVG funds is council would need to look at amending the action plans for next year to allow those federal funds to be spent on urban downtown enhancements and transportation enhancements. I think that's a correction.
Yeah, we would just develop the budget that way for next year. We wouldn't need to amend current plans, we could put it into the next budget.
The only problem with that is you're not using them in, you know, other areas, right? Where there's?
We would still be in low and moderate income neighborhoods, they're eligible neighborhoods to use CDVG in.
So, you, it wouldn't be any additional money, it would be the same money, but it would just be allocated in a different area, correct?
It would be in this area, yep.
The big question I have isn't, okay, let's say that it is built, sustainability. Of course, it's going to obviously need some kind of level of patrol, some level of security. That's my concern.
Less maintenance.
Exactly. I mean, you're talking, if you're talking stone dust, that's going to need to be put out, maintained, raked out, all that heavy stuff, tampered. Blacktop, same difference, you're going to have to patch or seal cracks and go in after Again, like I say, the manpower involved, and we got playgrounds we're not taking care of because of this, and roadsides that we're not taking. What I'm very concerned about, we do this, and it just gets to be treated just like some of our playgrounds and roadsides where it just gets overgrown and somewhat let go wild. And the other thing is, again, like I say, security, patrol. It almost needs to be foot traffic by a policeman.
The beauty of starting with downtown is we're already on roadway that we're already planning to have an ID. So, the Parker's Market located at Node Seven right now has expressed interest in being able to allow bicyclists to walk so finally by the state route through downtown. The cycling convention that they possibly avoid downtown right now because there isn't a designated cycling route upon their return, if they were to be going for downtown, potential stops at lunch or any businesses. So, you know, that's sort of the aspect that we're looking at at this point. The, between Node Seven and Node Eight is already on existing roadways. It's the Canal Street section, which right now actually is a city road, and we do already are required to maintain that. The purpose of this fine place to provide signs that you are supposed to.
But I'm talking about the lofty goal of extending it out. I mean, eventually, if this thing spiders, spider webs out like it is, it's, it may become, like I say, somewhat burdensome as far as what I just laid out. Now, the bike trails, is that going to have to take out a piece of the existing road?
Yes.
Okay, so I can already see.
Restrikt, and we're looking at actually some extension, and some areas could not be up.
So, you'll essentially be taking out one lane of road?
Yes, that is supposed to, for Hill Street and the road. And we've already discussed that our track that's mentioned here, and then also our track that's enforcement officer, the city is on the committee, and he's looked at this and is comfortable with that part.
I'm just concerned that, you know, now we have this biking trail, and now a stripe isn't going to stop a car. It's going to cross a stripe if it wants to.
And so, there's that issue that we are supposed to pay attention to cyclists within that section of the roadway.
Yeah. Like I say, people get hit on bicycles as it is now. It's a?
Yeah, it does need to be for them, if you're ready to get safety for the road. So, I think, you know, to discuss the other areas of the trail a little bit, I had a nice conversation with a property owner that a bus, the Wadsworth Park Trailhead area, and he's incredibly frustrated that we're not able to maintain that parcel currently. And he has offered to be part of our design review committee, he personally wants to maintain it, he wants to do something with it. It's probably one of the nicest areas for people to pitch in or to get a sense of what the river is really like. The city actually has a forever quiet section down there, so there's really nothing else section down there, so there's really nothing else that we can do with it other than public park land at this point. So, I think that there's, where we collect this up, that they're looking for areas to adopt and maintain. Other people have stepped up and said they would really like to adopt a trail section. The school district has offered to look at potentially do something with their section of the trail. They actually purchased them bikes, I believe, for some of their students, and are looking for a trail on their property to be able to use this during construction. So, you know, we have that in those briefing meetings we've been doing over the last couple of years.
Christina, and some of their concerns are that Counselor Kamara and Counselor Razika brought up are very legitimate, but I really like to make this work. The project in its totality is nine million dollars?
Yes.
Okay. Now, what would be the timeframe of the construction of this project?
So, if we go after project funding this summer, and if we are awarded project funding, the state and or federal highway will like to get money out on our contract by June of next year. So, we will be finalizing design for bid letting as of September of next year. So, to have construction money already in our bank would be a big cap that we could potentially be going to construction this summer, 2015.
Okay. Christina, with the CFA process, would you go for the entire nine million dollars, or would you be going in sections, and maybe that's to our consultants?
You don't need to, I like to go big or go home.
Yeah.
[laughing]
I'm glad I asked you.
[laughing]
No, I, and before, let me interrupt you one second, because I'm looking for a little direction from you, as to what you would like to see council to do, and then whether we need it in the form of a resolution through Mr. Rossi's office or whatever. So, I'm trying to pin you down a little bit on that, but go big.
Yes. For those of you that have been following the Regional Economic Development Councils and their strategic planning, and I think the efforts that the governor and [inaudible] have been doing, focusing on improvements in our downtown is what's been supported highly this summer when trying to secure grant money. The revitalization of urban cores, leveraging strategic assets such as tourism, they're looking for all of that in our applications. So, to maybe start on a trailhead such as Wasco River Park, which is not an CDBG eligible area, you know, may not score as well this summer to try to secure some of that trail money. So, starting downtown, where we pretty much told all our agencies, partner agencies, that's where our whole program is, that's where we've said, look, we've got brownfields to work with, you know, it's where we want to keep our development happening.
Christina, when you say the downtown area, what is point A and point B?
Well, this is the section that we would be focusing on for the [inaudible]. So, from Curly's Park, where Harper's Market is, down State Street, Loop Road, over to Canal, across the bridge, we'd like to do some improvements there, particularly to highlight our enhancements that were joined with the hydroelectric facility, and then also talk about the history with the hole and those. There is an optional pedestrian cap to try to take advantage of the natural beauty that's down there on that big parcel, you know, that is an option. And then we would bring people back up Miller Street and do pedestrian loop back down East Hill. So, there's been encouragement from the businesses. They would love to be able to get out and do some type of small half-mile walking loop. This would provide that opportunity. BPW has said that they've had complaints with legal dumping down by the hydro facility. We really would like to remove that. The whole point is more eyes, more people in the area, the less, you know, maybe people will take advantage of that.
Back to the question, and I, moving forward, we need to address the individual concerns of homeowners. The signage on Pulsiver concerns me a little as well. How much signage would be needed on Pulsiver if we were to go that route?
Just a sign.
So, it wouldn't be every 30 yard?
No.
Okay.
Maybe every 70, 80 yards, something along those lines.
So, is the school district property, I mean, the job at Stadium, right, so...
So, some guy's not going to wake up and have a sign in his front yard next to his mailbox?
[laughing]
Okay. Now, if we were to look at a different route than Pulsiver, and Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is where you were alluding to. I mean, we already had the sidewalks on Lake Ave. Obviously, bicyclists couldn't use the sidewalks, I mean, even though my kids do, but the bicyclists could use the road for Lake Ave, which they already do. Wouldn't that be the most harmless way to go, is going Lake Ave? I know it's not the scenery of, I mean, even going down Pulsiver, you've got to look through yards to see the water, I mean.
That's why it is an option in there, and when we finally get money to do detailed design, what we've talked about is, yeah, and the park consultants is trying to get a couple members from each of the neighborhoods to help us go over to design review committee and vet those issues, and make sure the public's faithful as we go into detailed designing and construction. So, at this point, I don't know if you do know, but the city would have sponsored in the next four-year transportation permanent plan to redo Lake Ave. So, at that point, we'll actually probably use those federal funds from 2015 to 2017. We can already reset to, they're just writing for the white lanes and if that's the way they're going to choose.
Now, the Auburn High School piece, this part really intrigues me, because that's where you do get the scenic view. And, Mayor, you probably remember this before, I would, but, I mean, that used to be utilized quite a bit back in the day. Not making fun of you, but I'm just...
Back in my day.
[laughing]
Counselor, I went to West High School.
But that was a utilized area. What does, you said you spoke with the school district?
Yeah.
And, I mean, that's an underutilized area now. I mean, it's behind the ball fields. There's already a trail that goes, granted, it's a small one, but they've been pretty open?
Oh, yes. They sent formal letters of support. We've talked to their brand speaker. We've talked to Matt personally. She's very supportive. The blueprint too, I think at some point too, they have a student group that looked at and explained to the school district, they thought it was even important for the students to have some kind of connection between the school and the owner. We used all of that to help sort of create their rule system that they would use for their general practice.
Would the school be supportive of that trail as far as maintaining it?
That's something that we should have a discussion about.
Some of it would be outside the city, wouldn't it? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no, the county has said that they will take care of whatever is in that, whatever would be our responsibility.
There already is a trail, isn't there, and the county owns in that area?
There's no connection. If you go under West Bridge Road, you need to go back to West Bridge Road, cross the bridge, and then come down to get to the park. So, they have to figure out a way to get to that parking lot that was just off of the lottery. Some people could potentially park there, get right on their bikes, and be able to get the trail.
The, back to the high school site, they have, you have the optional off-road trail. I'm just curious where that's going. And I'm just, I do think it's neat.
Yeah.
It splits the...
Right.
So, is that the wooded area you'd be going through?
So, the Dean Multi-Use Opera Trail that follows the riverside, that's already the existing trail.
Right.
And then that connects, looking on the track, and would follow along behind the ball fields up to the end of Pulsiver. And then there's the lighter shade one.
That's the one I'm referring to?
That's the one that they would like to see implemented to create the rules.
"They" being the school district?
That's right.
Okay, so that would cut, so that would, okay, I see.
You were at Bicep Day area.
That makes sense.
They're looking for internal loops on their property for their students, as well as public members. A lot of the public, um, [inaudible].
Christina, is this the site for the Bark Free Your Park that's in contention for funding nationally?
That's Melrose Park.
Melrose Park.
Now, just to look at all angles, if the school district's looking to use this for their physical education program, are they willing to put in for some of the cost?
We haven't gotten that, our discussions have been...
Hmm.
First and foremost, there's something called Section 4F at the federal level, and we had to make sure that this school district was not bored and would allow us to even utilize their property for a public purpose such as this. They did agree that it would be great, so at this point, we're just finishing up the [inaudible] process, and we'd like to talk to them about whether we do ask for details.
And the same happened with the county. They said, okay, and the county, Land?
County Land, there's on the committee, he's been very helpful.
See, and what timelines are your, you know, I know next week you're looking to have an application voted on by us?
The Consolidated Funding Application process closes this August 12th at the 1st day. So, if you wanted a public hearing, John, you could probably do that for the 20th meeting, and then make it to a resolution on August 1st. I guess in the meantime, what I'd be looking for is at least some type of [inaudible] at this point that I was to start working on, looking at the application for, but that would only give me a week and a half if that's what you want to do.
Christine, what I think is, the area around the high school, to me, looks like it would get the greater utilization by not only the students, but, you know, the people in the area. They would definitely ride around that, do these loops. Why don't we look at that area first? I think that that would be probably the most trafficked point of this whole trail, and would bring the most, I guess, use of it right away. I mean, to me, I see the use of this, this section right here is going to be the highest value here right now.
That is the city, number one.
Well, part of that, when I write applications, I will get it from my business school first of all. So, I'm not necessarily looking at are school districts eligible for financing or funding, or is the partner agency [inaudible] for process. I'd have to go back through to find out if school districts would be eligible to be, project would be on their property. Typically, in terms of state park money, you have to be the owner of the property in order to apply for funding. So, that's the difficulty at this point. They said we can do the project with them, but if they're the owners of the property, I mean, if you wanted to take ownership of the property, then that would be up to another discussion with this school district.
Well, why couldn't they do it jointly? Why couldn't it be a joint thing?
Some funding agencies will allow school districts to apply.
Christina, you said earlier too, that downtown development, that was the big hook with the CFA. That's a, that adds more to the weight of it.
Plus...
And nothing against the high school, it is a great place to walk and so forth, but our chances are better, I believe, in the downtown area.
Plus, looking at the, at the match piece, we have more opportunities for matching funds in the downtown area because of those being low and moderate income neighborhoods.
I tend to agree. I mean, the downtown area, that Mill Street area, needs a lot of attention right now. I mean, right now, there's hardly any attention put into that area. Yeah, the Mill Street area is definitely a mess.
Christina, one of the concerns is, let's say we start this project with Phase 1, and the rest of the phases, for whatever reason, does not come to fruition, like a John Wash Boulevard, for example. So, I'm afraid of having the trail to nowhere. So, how, help alleviate that concern?
I think at this point, that's why I'm, the ending sections that we did, so if you have Harper's Market or with the establishment businesses on State Street, and the parking lot there for Curly's, you know, it would be that downtown rating, some type of loop that goes through downtown. Then you're not seeing like you just have to trail somewhere and it's done. So...
And the usage of general fund money?
No.
As you all know, we're, this economic situation we're in, we can't afford to do that. So, you're comfortable in saying that general fund money would not be utilized?
I mean, if that's [inaudible] with counsel, then you have to be creative with buying it.
Yeah.
That would be my...
You're going to have to be creative.
Yeah.
Very creative.
We can't lay off employees of the city.
To make a trail.
Trail. Again, I love, I love the project, I love the concept, I love the idea, but, and you're very well aware, we have to look at the full picture, the trail and the impact from homeowners, the city, and everything else. But this is, this is something I think's definitely worth our time to look into.
So, if we did downtown, and we go up to the Mill Street dam, and that would be the cutoff part, it wouldn't go beyond that?
Yeah, we wouldn't go, we wouldn't do the Zen or Lake or [inaudible] or really looking at, particularly that off-road piece, Canal Street, and back on Miller, to provide that loop over to the East Hill area and back down. And a lot of dog walkers, you know, the police department said they would love to have people kind of watching it and run down there too. So, you know, I agree with them. Plus, it augments what we've just done with Market Street Park. State has said that they really like that we're continuing out from the center of the community, providing these type of services.
I definitely think this would, it would get utilized regardless to what level it was, it was developed. Seems a lot of people, you know, especially with the price of gas and things like that, are looking for ways of getting around. I see a lot of walkers, bikers, runners using this, so.
Let's start with downtown, and if we could, I'd still like to see, let's have a public hearing, and just to any feedback. That's my...
Christina, don't go as big, but go big in being cheap. All right? I think council's all on board and not, you know, we don't have a lot of money. Okay. And Mr. Rossi, could you, I know you're looking something up, but could you figure backwards when the earliest we could have our public hearing and get a resolution on board, so we can, so we can accommodate everyone trying to get this?
It would have to come at a work session on the 25th, I think, to give Christina enough time to get her application together.
I guess what I'm interested in, in making sure she has enough time, she needs to start writing now. So, in order to make sure, I want to definitely accommodate the public hearing, but I don't want to waste F resources, and then if there's not interest in moving forward with this project, I would be concerned with her spending time on it now. But it's not enough time in two weeks to wait to start. So, if there's enough interest in general, I still want to do the public hearing and definitely can, and put those comments in the grant application, but I'd like her to get started on it if you're interested.
I agree. I think it needs to be moved along, especially this is city-owned property. We have full control of it, so I think it's, it would be good to vitalize the trail downtown. What stops us, stops us from having a public hearing next week?
I think because we have to advertise it.
Make advertisement.
You have to vote.
Well, Debbie, could you get it?
If you could vote on one tonight, and then...
Do it next week?
I'll make...
Someone makes a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Sure.
Counselor Kamara?
We have a public hearing for the trail, downtown trail, for next week.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Green. I'll give everyone a chance to make notes.
To have the public hearing on the 18th.
That's correct.
Right.
A week from today.
For the downtown trail. Yep.
Further discussion, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Kamara?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Razika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Yes.
Carried.
So, our public hearing for all those in regards to the trail will be next week, and you'll have an opportunity to say what's on your mind, and for anyone else. How about the timing for Christina to start on the grant? City manager?
Well, what we were hoping to do, we have a couple of CFA applications that we're looking at, and we are planning, as you know from the proposed agenda, we're planning on bringing resolutions next week as well. I know sometimes you don't like to vote the same night on something that you have a public hearing on, but again, this is an application to see if we can get funding. I believe the way that we would write the resolution is that we would come back to you if we received the funds, that you could approve the grant agreement at that time.
Well, it's all hinging on the grant funding anyhow, so.
It agrees.
Yeah, it sounds...
Yeah.
So, you'd be okay with a resolution? So, you'd be okay for, with a resolution next week for applying?
Yeah, we have to do this anyway, so. With the public hearing, people are not held to the three minutes.
No, that's correct.
Okay, so I think that's important to note for people that want to speak. You're not held to the three minutes if you want to speak your heart out on this issue.
No filibuster.
Christina, are you, are you comfortable where we stand between our city manager and our city attorney?
Yeah, just to clarify some directions. So, as long as no general funds are used, those applications will allow other in mind, local match, federal match, and those should be the ones explored.
Yep. Now, Christina, at one point, there's one of the foundations was looking to put some money into the Wadsworth area.
Okay.
Okay. This was about four or five years ago.
Okay.
So, I can talk to you about that a little later?
I mean, the neighborhoods have basically said, well, we really would like to do something with that, actually, the state. So, you know, with the CFAs right now, the governor said urban development, that's important. So, let's start here, but then the next section should be the trail next section with our EPA designated brown areas, you know, looking at that part of the community.
To go off of that, can, you've seen several places where people donate a bench, whatever, could someone from the private sector donate a certain part of the trail? You know, they could have a plaque with their name, or a loved one that they've lost, or something, whatever, but could, like a public-private type partnership?
For maintenance?
For maintenance, or for, even for construction of it?
Yeah, I mean, if we knew people were interested in providing cash towards the aid match that we would need, that would be fine. Private funds are always welcome.
Okay.
Never excluded from the grant applications, the state, federal, if they have issues.
So, if that's something we can get out there, I mean, to make this, to make this work.
If the whole community buy into it.
Sure.
So, we can rename the crazy street section Smith?
Maybe for the dog park.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you for...
Our other guest here.
Give everyone a chance to leave us. You're welcome to stay. We're not bad people.
Did you have any other questions for us before we go?
No. I'm sure there'll be 20 as soon as you get half of my out of town, so. I'm sorry?
Will this be on the website, the presentation, before the public hearing?
Oh, it's a good idea.
Do that.
Sure.
If they're gonna speak about it, they don't know.
We'll do that.
How it might impact them.
We'll do that.
Good. Greg, can you handle that? Okay, he's taking it on.
Public announcements?
None. Oh, we're gonna have a public hearing next, next Thursday, at 6:00 regarding the Owasco Trail.
Thank you. Downtown trail.
Owasco River Trail.
Just so you all know, the detailed design report has been on the city's website with these maps on it as well. So, it's been up since January, but we'll make sure that it's specifically pointed to.
These maps here?
Yes.
How, is it pretty easy to get to, or?
Maybe we can put a link on the home.
You may want to put a link on the front pa, you know, on the page or something.
Sure. I'll happily do that. I know you're magical.
Mm-hmm.
Magic link.
We'll call for our city manager's report. I'd like to introduce, for those that don't know, Jenny. If you haven't been involved with city business, if you don't know, Jenny Haynes, who's our acting city manager. Jenny, if you want, city manager report?
I just have two items, Mayor, and Counselor Green had requested this first one. Due to the recent flooding of the counties east of us, the governor has declared a state of emergency, and that has required our York Street Construction Project Contractor, CCI Companies, to be commissioned to mobilize and assist in the disaster relief operations for the affected flooded areas. There will be a small crew continuing the driveway and sidewalk installations on York Street between North Division Street and State Street, but the pavement reconstruction operation scheduled to be started this week between State Street and Quarry Road will be delayed until the contractor is released from their disaster relief assignments. That is also on the website. That was also on the website.
So, York Street hasn't been abandoned. Well, it's been abandoned for, for good reasons.
Right. So, as soon as we can get our contractor back, they'll keep, keep working on that. And then, Department heads this week, we're going through the recap from July 2nd, and just wanted to make sure we got the right direction on the RFP and RFQ for the landfill operations. Counsel Razika, I think that was your request. Just wanted to make sure we had the right scope for what you were looking for on that. So, I don't know if you want to talk about that now, or?
Sure. Well, what I'd like to see is, is we look at the options that were laid out to us by, by Seneca Metals.
Okay.
And, and look, investigate them, of course, so there's not a sole source bidder. We have to open up, I guess the nearest one is, basically, Casella. They're, they're both nearby. But, of course, you should extend it anywhere where it's practical. We need to, you know, at least a competition here for that.
As an RFP or an RFQ, that's, that is open to everyone.
Yep, yes.
Right, we would advertise it. We just wanted to make sure we understood exactly what you were looking for. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Presentation, petitions, and communications?
I have a letter, a letter from Andrew Fish. He wasn't able to come and ask that we read the letter into the record. Dear members of council, as interim director of the Cuba Economic Development Agency, I am writing to express the agency's full support for the Owasco River Greenway Trail project. This project is an important component of the revitalization of the city of Auburn, and we have an opportunity to pursue funding that will reduce the burden on our local citizens. Waterfront revitalization is a priority at both the state and federal levels. The federal government has already invested $500,000 in our community to create a plan to highlight the underutilized Owasco River. State funding, such as that available through the New York State Consolidated Funding Application and the New York State Department of Transportation Grants, is aimed specifically at creating trails and greenways that attract people and businesses, and enhance the local economy. Action steps for waterfront revitalization are included in the regional council's five-year strategic plan for the central New York region, Cuba County's strategic plan for economic development, and the city of Auburn's comprehensive plan. All of these plans were written with the input of local citizens, and with the intent of maximizing the assets found in our communities to promote growth. It is very clear that federal, state, regional, counties, and city plans all support the creation of the Owasco River Greenway Trail. This trail will be used by residents and visitors alike, and will be a catalyst for growth and investment. SEDA would be happy to share studies and reports that have been done on communities with similar projects, and the positive economic impact that they have had. As taxpayers in the state of New York, our tax dollars are being used to fund the available grant opportunities. If our community does not apply for these funds, the hard, excuse me, the hard-earned tax dollars of our citizens and businesses will simply go to another community. I strongly urge the city council to fully support this project. Sincerely, Andrew Fish. That's all I have.
Seeker resolutions?
None.
Ordinances?
None.
Resolutions?
None.
Local laws?
None.
Table legislation. Financial Resolution Number 70 of 2013, authorizing the adoption of 2013 downtown business improvement district bid tax rate by Counselor Razika, seconded by?
I, you took my, my copy of it, you have.
We have a typo.
There's a second, Counsel Green?
Sorry. Oh, I didn't know it was... Counsel Razika, Counsel Green?
Could we amend the typo before we read it?
Yes, you, I would suggest we take a vote on amending it to remove the comma after the three and insert a period.
Entertained a motion to amend. Counsel Green, seconded by Counsel Camardo. If you call the roll in regards to the amendment?
Yes. Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Aye.
Counsel Razika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye. Should let you read into, into the record as amended.
Yes, I will. Financial Resolution Number 70 of 2013 by Counsel Razika, seconded by Counsel Green. Whereas the city of Auburn has adopted the 2013 city tax rate, and the amount of the levy for the bid cannot exceed 20% of the city levy in that district. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Auburn, New York, that it does hereby adopt the 2013 bid tax rate for the city of Auburn Downtown Business Improvement District in the city of Auburn, in the amount of .305840 cents per $1,000.
Is that correct?
Three point.
It's three point.
Point three. Did I say three point?
Three point.
Three point oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh-oh. Mine was better. It produces a levy of 3.05840 cents per 1,000 of taxable assessed valuation, which produces a levy of $113,999. And yet, further is resolved that the city council of the city of Auburn, New York, that it does hereby authorize the preparation of the necessary tax bills.
Is that correct, Mr. Rossi? He has read?
Yes, as, as amended.
As amended.
Discussion, council? Clerk, if you call the roll?
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Camardo?
Because I own property in, in this district, I'm gonna abstain.
Counsel Razika? Oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Smith?
Aye.
Counsel Razika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Other business, council?
Just a couple things, Mayor. Christina's left. Jenny, you might know about this. I know recently, there was, Mayor, you might as well, you might as well, too. There was a meeting at Lemoine earlier this week on a construction project that's taking place in Syracuse. I believe it's the repair to their, their bile duct that goes through downtown Syracuse.
The Route 81 corridor?
I believe so, yes. And several of the surrounding towns went to the, went to the meeting because they were concerned about the impact it would have during the construction of forcing the trucks to come through, more traffic to come through the city than come through the towns. And, as of right now, the, the state DOT, they're having meetings on this, and the review process will take about two years. So, as they're going through this review process, they're, they want to address any concerns that any surrounding towns, villages, municipalities will have about the potential impact it could have on their communities. It's a, you know, we talk about our infrastructure and our roads, and the damage to the roads and so forth. I mean, this is something that could expedite damage to our infrastructure. So, I guess, I know Ed Wagner, I did some homework, and Ed Wagner, town supervisor for Owasco, he did go to the presentation, he did go to the presentation, and I believe he spoke. And I was wondering if he could come and give us, come to council, and give us a little tutorial, if you will, on exactly what was, what was talked about, and what took, took place at the meeting, and what our potential options are.
We can do that.
Okay. That was just one item. And, I mentioned a few weeks ago, if we could have a meeting set up with our city representatives in the county legislature, to not only talk about a potential tax formula, but also to have a discussion with them on potential consolidation of services between the city and the county. And I think this would be a, a good dialogue, because it's not with the, all the representatives in the county ledge. It would be with the city reps, we could have them here, and talk about those, those specific topics, tax formula, and a consolidation of services, and of course, give them enough time so they can prepare, and, and we can prepare on what needs to be, what we can discuss. And...
Counselor, just for section, for clarity, if we could have maybe a laundry list, so that they can be specifically informed as to what we want to talk to them about?
Tax formula would definitely, I agree, tax formula would definitely be a topic. And a consolidation of services could range from civil service. I know we talked earlier about the collection of the tax, of the tax bills. I don't know if that's a charter issue that we have to deal with. From planning, economic development, I know that was just, that was something we discussed yesterday in our ADA meeting.
Human resources, counselor?
Human resources. So, yeah, I mean, I guess we could, right there's just some off the top of my head.
And I, I, if there's anything that anyone else has, to at least contact Jenny, or the manager's office within the next few days, because Doug will be back on Monday.
I'll make sure to communicate this to Doug as well.
Okay. And...
Before you move off that subject, John, if you could give us some history, the city opted out to go and, and take, you know, sales tax dollars in the city limits back in 91, I believe.
They did, too, yes.
If we opted to go with the county, can we, and, you know, there's nothing to say if we went with the county, they could allow us to, to go with them, and then later on down the road, if they started having some financial problems, they could say, well, we're gonna give the city a lot less than what we said, but we're in a financial difficulty right now. Can the city opt to go back afterwards?
I had that discussion with the comptroller's office a couple months ago, and they, the person that I spoke with said, you can opt out again.
You can?
Yeah.
So, there's...
I'll double check it, though.
I just would want to make sure that we had options on the table.
Yeah, you don't, you don't burn your bridges if you wanted to go back.
Because if, who knows what's gonna happen down the road with the county, and they're having difficulties with finances, they could say, well, we don't have to give you anything, and turn around, and we wouldn't get any sales tax dollars at all. So, I just want to make sure that we did our homework on that.
And that's all I had.
Well, along the consolidation, if we're gonna make a laundry list, I'd like to see some, perhaps even some DPW effort, where we can help, you know, or be assisted in some of the, like, snow plowing, things like that.
I know at one point Doug did talk to the administrator about some.
Some of that, yeah.
Yeah, some of that.
Mm-hmm. Plus, you know, water, water main repair, things like that, water.
We just gotta make sure, one thing that, you know, and I think it's a good idea, we talk about consolidation, is the cost that's gonna be delivered back to the city, because a lot of times, unfortunately, we did it.
Yeah, I don't want us to be burdening the entire cost.
We might be paying more for services that we go with them. If something could be worked out, or was cost savings, I'm, I'm all for it, but...
It has to be a cost savings, otherwise we're not gonna go for it.
But you have to look at that before you...
Absolutely.
...venture down that road.
Anything else?
Yes, I'd like to, to share one thing on a lighter note. Counsel Camardo achieved a, I'm gonna say a life's personal, major milestone here in his 25th wedding anniversary, and I think, congratulations are in order.
Appreciate that. You gotta...
I think a congratulations goes to his wife. Everybody else was thinking it. Congratulations.
Your wife the same. She's a saint, believe me.
Counsel, I, I have one thing to add, and I'll go last, if there's anything for me.
No, that's fine.
I had a meeting yesterday afternoon with the mayor of St. Catherine's, Ontario, and at the same time, we had a conference call with the mayor of Cambridge, Maryland. We're looking in the near, very near future to have a sister cities relationship between St. Catherine's, city of Auburn, and Cambridge, Maryland, with a tie-in being Harriet Tubman. And there was members from the tourism board were there, a couple other people, but everyone is very interested in this. St. Catherine's is very interested in Cambridge, Maryland. The best part that I look at is it, it doesn't cost us any money, other than the printing and so forth and so on. So, I will keep you advised as it, as it moves closer. We have nothing in writing yet, but we're working on it. Counselor?
Didn't we have, when I was growing up, I remember the Candace?
Candace game, I was just gonna say that.
We, we did, but we've tried to find any, any paperwork or anything on that. We couldn't come up with anything, counsel, because I was involved with it, not as a youth, as a, as a young kid, when it, when it happened, so.
One last thing I'd like to bring up is that we had that workshop on living within a 2% cap, and the ladies that presented gave us some worksheets. And I would like to see what we could do to try and implement those sheets. Currently, I think they, they presented a very good solution or an idea here to justify costs and control, actually lead to some issues where they could control costs because of... actually lead to some issues where they could control costs because of, and make sure that you have the right skill sets. So, I really think it's an important thing to follow through on that.
Counselor, I didn't mean to cut you off, I thought you were done.
No, it's okay.
Sorry. Counselor Smith, did you...
No, that was, the mayor and I will be meeting with those young ladies to discuss that topic.
Very good.
Yeah, that was an excellent exercise.
That was the, from Seneca Falls?
Yes. Seneca Falls, ex-fillage of Seneca Falls.
Anything else, council? Recap?
Mayor Quill asked that time be taken to review the information that was presented by Larson Engineers with the city manager. Council Kamado requested that another public hearing be scheduled to give the public opportunity, another opportunity to speak on the Owasco River Greenway project. Counselor Smith asked that we invite Ed Wagner, the Owasco Town Supervisor, to speak at council to explain what he learned regarding the Route 81 expansion, is that what they're doing?
Reconstruct.
Reconstruction, okay. Counselor, I didn't write down who said this, so. Council Razika did. Council Razika asked that we have a meeting with county legislators.
Smith, somehow.
Counselor Smith.
Smith did, oh.
Yes.
Sorry. To talk about, among other things, the tax formula and consolidation of services, including but not limited to civil service, tax bills, planning, HR, and public works.
Is that correct, council?
I got one more.
There's economic development also.
Yes, got it. And Counselor Razika recommended that the 2% tax cap worksheets that were used in a presentation be brought up to be used.
Do we have requests for executive session?
I have none.
Done. This time entertain motion to adjourn. Counsel Kamado, seconded by Counsel Graney. Call the roll, please.